All right, welcome everyone. Thank you for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order Tuesday, October 10. If you would like to rise, we'll do the Pledge of Allegiance.
I have a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Actually, Commissioner Walz, can you grab the public comment sheet? Thanks. Do you want to?
Martha.
Yep.
Martha Arling.
Great. Welcome Martha.
And Jen Sharon Hayes. And there's nobody else that could sign up for the public comment?
Okay. Welcome Martha. You can come sit up at the table. So we'd ask that public comment be in the scope within two to three minutes. Thank you.
We don't approve agenda?
Oh, wait a minute. Wait a minute. Martha, I totally went forward, sorry. I forgot to approve the agenda. If you hold on for one minute, my mistake. My mistake. Welcome Commissioner Carey. So, yep. Does anyone have any items to remove from the consent agenda before we begin? Commissioner Ivanchik.
I have the same questions I did a month ago about 5B, routine hiring recommendations.
Pull the item.
So pull it.
Okay.
Okay. So you have that Commissioner Wick.
Pull.
So on the consent agenda, routine hiring recommendations, B. Item B.
Yes.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. Then will someone give me a motion to approve the agenda?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda Chair Wool. I'd like to move the library funding discussion up to right after public comment, essentially to respect the time of a number of folks here. So either to get it done or not to wait around, as the case may be. So I would suggest that we move item 6A up to right after 3B. So it's just a little insertion. You can just call it 3 capital A, which is going to be called Library Funding Decision, or Discussion rather. If that's okay, that would be mine.
Great. Do I have a, is there a second?
Second.
Second Commissioner Ivanchik. Any discussion? All right. Then do I have a motion to approve the agenda that remain on the consent agenda? Approve the items that remain on the consent agenda?
I think it's just a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So we're doing.
I'm sorry, to approve the agenda as amended. Thank you. Commissioner Wick. All those in favor?
Is there a second?
There was a second. Commissioner Ivanchik. All those in favor again? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you Commissioner Wick. All right, then I need a motion to approve the items that remain on the consent agenda, which would be items A, C, D, E, F, and G.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, as Chair Wool said, except for 5B, which I assume will pick up at the right time.
Great. Is there a second? Commissioner Sowers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Then the motion carries. Thank you. Now a motion to approve the agenda. Does anyone have any changes they would like to make to the agenda? Oh, we just did that. Thank you. Thank you. Sorry.
Public comment?
Public comment. Item number three. Thank you. Martha Lang, thank you for waiting.
Good evening. My name is Martha Reeves-Langman. I live at 138 Colchester Avenue in Burlington. This morning I wrote the Secretary of the Agency of Education, Daniel French. His response to me was to share as soon as I could with the school board my concerns. So what I thought I would do is read the letter that I wrote to Secretary Daniel French. Dear Secretary French, two Burlington School Commissioners began negotiations to sell the Ira Allen School without the permission or the knowledge of the school board and the owner of the property, the City of Burlington. This has been going on for almost a year and involved the senior vice president at UVM. Secondly, the school administration continues to attempt to build two new pre-K buildings at the cost of $39 million with $19 million bond money that was approved for renovations and additions, and $20 million from the maintenance and repair funds. No wonder the schools are in so need of so much repair. Finally, the maintenance and repair budget for the Burlington School District is $2 million. The monthly financial reports under the new accounting system, and it just went in place in July and it was at the request of the Agency of Education, that's just a footnote, shows the administration is $1.3 million over budget. I am waiting on a public records request to find out more. Aren't there any consequences for a school district and board members who behave in such a fashion? Thank you very much.
Thank you Martha. Commissioner Walz, next up is librarian. Sharon Hayes?
Yes.
Great. Hi, welcome. Welcome.
My colleague Jen Peak is going to join us, join me. I'm reading a letter from the President of the ALA, Wanda K. Brown, and also the President of the American Association of School Librarians, Mary Keeling. This is addressed to Superintendent O'Bang, Chairwoman Wool, and board members. As President of the American Library Association and the American Association of School Librarians, we appreciate Burlington School District's explicit effort to achieve equity in the allocation of library resources. Equity is at the heart of national school library standards and the common beliefs that ground the work of school librarians. To that end, we would like to clarify that a statement referenced in the school district's October 8th memo regarding library funding does not reflect a recommendation from ALA or ASL. It is a citation of valuable research into the characteristics of effective school libraries, including sustained annual funding. While that research advances our understanding, it reflects data from the early 200s, 2000s, excuse me. The definition of an effective school library both reflects and anticipates an environment of continuous change. Well-resourced libraries are positioned to proactively respond to internal and external changes in the learning landscape. What remains constant is the need for learners to develop a continuum of skills and dispositions that prepare them to be fully engaged participants in our dynamic information society. Research overwhelmingly indicates that professionally staffed, adequately resourced school libraries are integral to that preparation. ALA and ASL do not recommend specific funding levels for school library materials. There are simply too many variables, from state and local funding formulas and curriculum to resource sharing agreements, and the needs of individual students within each school. We believe that decisions around funding are best made in consultation with the district librarian and their team of professional librarians within the schools. We also recognize when resources become outdated or do not reflect the diverse needs of learners within a school, additional investment is warranted. Rarely is equity achieved through proportionally lower funding levels. Thank you again for the district's commitment to equity and to school librarians. We are available to support Burlington School Librarians or district staff as you further develop a plan for equitable access to resources for all members of Burlington's learning community. And this is signed again by Wanda K. Brown, President of ALA, and Mary Keeling, President of American Association of School Librarians. Thank you. I'll leave this for the record.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. I know Commissioner Walz. Jonathan Fabian, who's a VHS senior, would like to speak and did not sign in. So Jonathan, would you like to come up? Hi Jonathan, welcome. So you have two to three minutes, okay? I'm going to time it, and I'm glad you're here. All right. Welcome.
Are you ready?
We're ready. Thank you.
Good evening, BSD School Board. Before I get into the reason why I'm here, I would like to thank, thank you for supporting the students that walked out on September 20th. The global climate strike had a very successful turnout. Hopefully, we have inspired our legislators to take action against climate change because a healthy earth will benefit future generations. Now moving on to my, the main reason for my presence. On October 20, on August 26, I expressed to Principal Green in an email, my interest in starting a student-serving group. I heard no immediate response from Principal Green, so I waited until September 5 to send him a follow-up email. I still didn't hear a response from him. I sent Principal Green one last email on September 11. Vice Principal McBride told me that he sent, she sent two emails to Principal Green. Eventually, I got a little frustrated, so I sent Superintendent O'Bang an email. His response was quick. He pledged his, he pledged support for my group, but sent me back to Mr. Green. And then, and then went. As I was meeting with Ms. Wool, we discussed, we were having a great discussion until Bernie, I brought my Bernie group. She said it would be a problem because BSD does not like to endorse presidential candidates. This group will be doing something called Campus Canvassing. This is a very common tactic. It's talking, it's talking to people we know and people we don't know. I actually have a certificate that proves my, that proves my participation in the training program. Bernie is running a grassroots campaign that is fueled by people power. He does not accept corporate money from billionaires. Presidential polls have shown that he is the strongest candidate to beat Trump. My question to you is, question to think about is, to what extent of political action is allowed at BSD? And what policies and procedures exist regarding the creation of student-led groups? I look forward to having further discussions regarding this matter, and thank you for, thank you for your time.
Thank you Jonathan. Is there anyone else who would like to speak for public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on to board reflections. Does anyone have any board reflections at this time? All right, I would just like to speak to Jonathan. Thank you very much for being here tonight. I will work with Superintendent O'Bang to get you in touch and have a meeting with Principal Green, and I just wanted to thank you for having the courage to come tonight, and thank you for your follow-up.
If we're facing a meeting, we'd be able to get on school board agenda next meeting. Like if we.
Yeah, I will work that out with you. Yeah, thank you very much. Anyone else? Stephen, Commissioner Carey, thank you.
I just want to thank people who have been communicating with me and with us in general about the library funding issue. There have been some very eloquent letters in support of certain positions that we'll discuss tonight, I believe. And I believe that it's extremely important that people do communicate the way you have been doing so, technologically, electronically, on the streets, in the markets. And I very much appreciate that input. It gives me some direction, which is what I need, to act in the best interest of the district, and in this particular case, in the libraries. Thank you.
No other commissioner has any reflections I would like to address as the co-chair of the Finance and Facilities Committee, that we are working as a committee with the Director of Facilities and the Superintendent and the Board to address our pre-K needs and our goal in working together with other community partners, such as UVM or Champlain College, is always with the intent of exploratory information gathering. And so I appreciate your support, the board's support in working with Finance and Facilities as we work together to come up with solutions and research. So, thank you. All right, next on the agenda is, moving on to the Superintendent. We moved item three.
Did you catch that? We moved library funding discussion up to right now.
Great.
Testing, one, two, three. Can you hear me? Well, Director Lavery approaches, just in response to, I think it was the September board meeting, the board had a conversation regarding library funding, and the board gave direction to Superintendent, to me, to develop a memo of analysis for October 8. On October 3, we did deliver a memo to board members around the analysis around library funding. And through conversations with the board executive, felt that we need to have a public conversation around it, because the direction was just for a memo. And so it's here today for discussion. I think if you've looked through the memo, there are ample information for the board to continue dialogue and decide on a path forward. We've put the analysis in terms of what we currently do, how things are administered, and some options in terms of coming up with a decision. But you may have some more questions in order to help feed a step forward. And I'll pass it over to Director Lavery to highlight a few areas and then open for discussion.
Thanks. So I know folks have had the memo here for a while, so I won't go through point by point. I'll just quickly run through and touch on a few high points. Number one, I think the most important thing to understand about the way that we fund the schools when it comes to the non-personnel type of costs generally, is that we provide for each school on the basis of a formula where we start with how much money is available to, to be spent, for example, on elementary school kind of non-personnel supplies. And then, we take that total amount of money, and we look at the enrollment at each school. And then we also look at a few of the needs factors, such as free reduced lunch and number of EL students. So essentially, we mimic the state formula for calculating equalized pupils. So for example, I'll just use simple round numbers here. If an elementary school has 100 actual students there, they may have 110, or 115, or 120 of our kind of weighted students, right? Reflecting the additional weight that is provided for some of those other needs factors. So, once we have that total number of weighted students, we divide the amount of money we have by the total for all, all the schools in that tier, such as elementary. but keeping in mind that's for those weighted students in this case. And then we just look at how many of those weighted students are at each school, and we give them that money. So then the question becomes, how is the money that each school receives in that fashion distributed in terms of whether it's sports libraries, music, general instructional supplies for classrooms and that sort of thing? That is not something that we restrict our principals in deciding, so we give them the ability to transfer money between lines. So whether a particular year that money is needed for something like, you know, new band equipment versus new textbooks in a, or you know, a classroom library, for example, the needs of their students. So there's not, that's not dictated from us, there's just a starting point that makes sure that the school has the total allocation that they're entitled to, and then from there, we let the principals decide. Just going to skip down a little bit here. So that kind of addresses the first two portions of the memo. Then we attempted to just respond to a few of the questions that had come up from the board, including the recommendation, or the question about recommendation for $8,000 per library. We recommended against this. I think, actually it was nice to, I also received that letter from the American Libraries Association, so it was great to see that they kind of agree that that kind of flat dollar amount isn't a good way to, to fund our libraries. Similarly, we also recommended, in our view, not removing the discretion of principals to make the decisions that are in the best interests of their school by requiring a certain amount of money, whatever that might, amount of money might be, to be spent on their libraries. But certainly something that can be explored. We also addressed the question of what could be done, like some ideas about to increase support for libraries, one of which, we actually used the figure that we found in the American investment in our libraries in the next budget cycle. So for context, we looked for some kind of number to ground that in, but ultimately, you can choose to make it whatever number you want. We're not saying that it has to be that number, we just looked for some number to, you know, give you a point of reference. So there's an option there, is one possible path forward for, excuse me, for the board. And then we also talked about a path forward for the current year that would involve looking for opportunities later in the year when we might be able to point to specific available funding, money that hasn't been spent in areas where it was anticipated to be spent, that we could redirect at that point to, to libraries. So tried to cover both where we are, where we came from, how we do school funding generally, something that maybe we can talk more about in detail at our meeting next week, where we have a little more opportunity to focus just on the budget. And then we tried to also address some of the specific questions that came up at that meeting in August.
Thank you Director Lavery. Anything else?
No, I just, I just, in the conversations when Director Lavery and I talked about the strategy in terms of how schools are funded overall, it probably would have been better to do the budget presentation first to get a better, bigger picture understanding, and then narrow down to this library piece would give the board a good clear context of how the pieces work. But in reviewing the information that we've gathered, and we know that the board's sort of desires, we're prepared to, to take direction based on what the board desires at this point. But we provide some information here, hopefully that gives you enough to kind of figure out what you want to do with, what you want to do in terms in short-term, as well as long-term. So we made some, some recommendations there, but open to your insight on that.
Thank you. One thing how we'll proceed next, Commissioner Wick, we can have some discussion, we can discuss resolutions that we've talked about, Commissioner Carey, Commissioner Wick. We've all, you know, time has not, we've not, that had that much time. We did receive the memo, thank you for the district memo on October 3. We did give our feedback, the memo was amended to the 8th. We're still, you know, reviewing it over the past two days, but I look to the commissioners, and I'll provide leadership as well at this time. So Commissioner Wick?
What I'd propose, subject to getting a sense as to whether the board is agreeable or not, meaning, I'd like to propose the following resolution, and then we discuss it, and if it doesn't seem like it has any traction, I'll pull it. But I think it's, it, the intent behind it, it's not the, as you know, there's been a couple of iterations and resolutions, and we've all been working very hard individually, thinking through this, and whether we act tonight, or whether we go back to the drawing board a bit and get more information. And I think that's what we're here tonight, to perhaps figure out whether we take any action tonight. So perhaps in the interest of putting something on the table, which I, I believe took into account getting the work done, the decision made that Commissioner Carey wanted to, yeah, done tonight, yet also provided the signal that we wanted to approach this more proactively in the future, I offer up the following resolution to see if anyone's willing to second it and then discuss it. The Burlington School Board resolves as follows, and actually, I have copies, if anyone wants it. In light of the, and you don't all have to agree with me, I admit, these are my words, I just tried my best to have a compromise resolution here. In light of the demonstrated significant underinvestment over many years at the Sustainability Academy and the Integrated Arts Academy with respect to libraries, each of these two schools are hereby allocated such additional funds as may be needed in this current school year. To ensure their current school year library book supplies and materials budget is $8,000 each, by way of example, and using information provided in the Superintendent's Library Funding Memorandum dated October 8, 2019. During last school year, SA spent $2,394 on library books, supplies, and materials, and IAA spent $2,732 on the same. Thus, the anticipated cost of this resolution is $10,874. The Board strongly encourages the Superintendent, the district lead principal, the principals of each elementary school, and the librarians at each elementary school, to work closely together to determine the future budget needs of each library, so that the Board may proactively allocate an educationally appropriate amount of money to each school to ensure properly funded libraries, which funding is not to be used for other non-library discretionary needs. For future reference, except in extreme cases, the Board prefers to make proactive future recommendations are made to the Board in the future. Does anyone want to second that?
Commissioner Ivanchik? Great discussion. Commissioner Carey?
I have a few comments. I like the way that this seems to be a compromise, because it specifies the funding for the two schools that are in most need, and it requires it in the first paragraph. I think I read it right.
You do.
And it's SA and IAA. What I don't like about it is the fact that the other schools are not mentioned, and it seems that, that it, there needs to be some consideration of the other schools as well. So I don't like the fact that only IAA and SA are mentioned in that first paragraph. I have a few more comments, but I'll, I'll wait on that.
Could I respond briefly to that? If you look at Director Lavery's table on his October 8 memo, on page 2, if you look at the total spent for each of the elementary schools, using very round numbers, you'll see, and this is the reason I didn't include the others, because I wanted to suggest we take a minimal effort now, just because it's, it's not very proactive. And so Champlain, $11,000. Edmonds L, practically $8,000. Flynn, $7,000. IAA, $2,700. Smith, $5,000. SA, $2,300. So the reason I, I limited it, because I was trying to limit the amount of money that we just put out the door right now without, in other words, I thought it was a Band-Aid, if you will, a much-needed one, for these two schools that seem to have been significantly underspending relative to the other schools for apparently, based on the research that has been provided to us by librarians and the like. There was a material difference, and that's why I didn't include them now, but I'm not singling them, the others out and saying they shouldn't, they shouldn't be proactively providing us with good information that we, on which we can base budgeting decisions. Thank you.
Commissioner Walz?
Yes. I just, it's not that I dislike this, it's that I think that really we should give the time to the principals and the librarians to go back and
So there's not, um, that's not dictated from us. There's just a starting point that makes sure that the school has the total allocation that they're entitled to, and then from there, we let the principals decide. Just gonna skip down a little bit here. That kind of addresses the first two portions of the memo. Then, we attempted to just respond to a few of the questions that had come up from the board, including the recommendation or the question about recommendation for $8,000 per library. We recommended against this. I think, actually, it was nice to, I also received that letter from the American Libraries Association, so it was great to see that they kind of agree that that kind of flat dollar amount isn't a good way to, um, to fund our libraries. Similarly, we also recommended, in our view, not removing the discretion of principals to make the decisions that are in the best interests of their school by requiring a certain amount of money, whatever that might, amount of money might be, to be spent on their libraries. But certainly something that can be explored. We also addressed the question of, um, what could be done, like some ideas about to increase support for libraries, one of which, uh, we actually used the, a figure that we found in the American Libraries website to say, hey, one concept could be to make a kind of one-time, big additional investment in our libraries in the next budget cycle. So, for context, we looked for some kind of number to ground that in, but ultimately, you can choose to make it whatever number you want. We're not saying that it has to be that number. We just look for some number to, you know, um, give you a point of reference. So, there's an option there, uh, is one possible path forward for, excuse me, for the board. And then, we also talked about a path forward for the current year that would involve looking for opportunities later in the year when we might be able to point to specific, um, available funding, money that hasn't been spent in areas where it was anticipated to be spent, that we could redirect at that point to, to libraries. So, tried to cover both where we are, where we've came from, how we do school funding generally, something that maybe we can talk more about, um, in detail at our meeting next week, where we have a little more opportunity to focus just on the budget. And then, we tried to, um, also address some of the specific questions that came up at that meeting in August.
Thank you, Director Lavery.
No, I just, I just, in, in, in the conversations when Director Lavery and I talked about the, um, the strategy in terms of how schools are funded overall, um, it probably would've been better to do the budget presentation first to get a better, bigger picture understanding, and then narrow down to this library piece would give the board a good, clear context of how the pieces work. But, um, in, in reviewing the information that, um, we've gathered and we know that the, the board's sort of desires, we're prepared to, um, to take direction based on what the board desires at this point. But we provide some information here, hopefully that gives you enough to kind of figure out what you want to do with, what you want to do in terms in short-term as well as long-term. So, we made some, some recommendations there, but open to, um, your insight on that.
Thank you. One thing how we'll proceed next, Commissioners, is Commissioner Wick, um, we can have some discussion. We can discuss, uh, resolutions that we've talked about, Commissioner Carey, Commissioner Wick. We've all, um, you know, time has not, we've not, that had that much time. We did receive the memo. Thank you for the district memo on October 3rd. We did give our feedback. The memo was amended to the 8th. We're still, you know, reviewing it over the past two days, um, but I look to the commissioners, um, and I'll provide leadership as well at this time. So, Commissioner Wick?
What I'd propose, subject to getting a sense as to whether the board is agreeable or not, meaning, I'd like to propose the following resolution, um, and then we discuss it, and if it doesn't seem like it has any traction, I'll pull it. Um, but I think it's, it, the intent behind it, it's, it's not the, uh, as you know, there's been a couple of iterations and resolutions, and we've all been working very hard individually, thinking through this, and whether we act tonight, or whether we go back to the drawing board a bit and get more information, and I think that's what we're here tonight to perhaps figure out, whether we take any action tonight. So, perhaps in the interest of putting something on the table, which I, I believe took into account, uh, um, getting the work done, the decision made that Commissioner Carey wanted to, Care, yeah, done tonight, yet also provided the signal that we wanted to, um, approach this more proactively in the future. I offer up the following resolution to see if anyone's willing to second it and then discuss it. Uh, the Burlington School Board resolves as follows, and actually, I have copies, if anyone wants it. In light of the, and you don't all have to agree with me, I admit, these are my words, I just tried my best to have a compromise resolution here. In light of the demonstrated significant under-investment over many years at the Sustainability Academy and the Integrated Arts Academy with respect to libraries, each of these two schools are hereby allocated such additional funds as may be needed in this current school year. To ensure their current school year library book supplies and materials budget is $8,000 each. By way of example, and using information provided in the superintendent's library funding memorandum dated Oc- October 8th, 2019, during last school year, SA spent $2,394 on library books, supplies, and materials, and IAA spent $2,732 on the same. Thus, the anticipated cost of this resolution is $10,874. The Board strongly encourages the superintendent, the district lead principal, the principals of each elementary school, and the librarians at each elementary school to work closely together to determine the future budget needs of each library, so that the Board may proactively allocate an educationally appropriate amount of money to each school to ensure properly-funded libraries, which funding is not to be used for other non-library discretionary needs. For future reference, except in extreme cases, the Board prefers to make proactive future budgeting decisions rather than after-the-fact remedial allocations, and we request principals to work proactively with librarians to ensure proactive, educationally sound, library budgeting recommendations are made to the Board in the future. Does anyone want to second that? Commissioner Ivanchuk?
Discussion? Commissioner Carey?
I have a few comments. I like the way that this is, uh, seems to be a compromise because it specifies the funding for the two schools that are in most need, and it requires it in the first paragraph. I, I think I read it right.
You do.
And it's SA and IAA. What I don't like about it is the fact that the other schools are not mentioned, and it seems that, that it, there needs to be some consideration of the other schools as well. So, I don't like the fact that only IAA and SA are mentioned in that first paragraph. I have a few more comments, but I'll, I'll wait on that.
Could I respond briefly to that? If you look at Director Lavery's table on his October 8th memo on page two, if you look at the total spent for each of the elementary schools, using very round numbers, you'll see, and this is the reason I didn't include the others, because I wanted to suggest we take a minimal effort now, uh, just because it's, it's not very proactive. And, so, Champlain, 11,000, Edmonds L., practically 8,000, Flynn, 7,000, IAA, 2,700, Smith, 5,000, SA, 2,300. So, the reason I, I limited it, because I, I was trying to limit the amount of money that we just put out the door right now without, in other words, I, I thought it was a, a Band-Aid, if you will, a much-needed one, for these two schools that seem to have been significantly underspending relative to the other schools for apparently, based on the research that has been provided to us by librarians and the like. There was a, a material difference, and that's why I didn't include them now, but I'm not singling them, the others out and saying they shouldn't, they shouldn't be proactively providing us with good information that we, on which we can base budgeting decisions. Thank you.
Commissioner Alw.
It's not that I dislike this. It's that I think that really we should give the time to the principals and the librarians to go back and come up with a budget of what they actually need now, because I'm not sure if $4,000 is enough to bring them where they need to be, or, and we do it with all of them, so that we really see, and I think in order to do that, we need the, the numbers from last year from each school given to the school principals of where all the money went, because they have no idea. And some of those old principals aren't here anymore to give them that information. So, I think every school should be given last year's allocation and what it was spent on, so they have some idea where that money went, so they can look at where the money is, needs, needed, and what needs to be spent on, or where it needs to be spent. And then, come back to us in a month with that information, or Stephen and I can go to each different school and talk to them and bring it all back to the school dis, uh, to the Board, and then make the decision on the spending, and what is needed, and where it's going to come from.
Thank you, Commissioner Alw. Commissioners Harris?
I wanna, I agree with what you're saying, and, um, I've been struggling with this as well, and have gone to SA and IAA, and I've tried to talk to some librarians and some principals, and try to see where, what's been going on, because I've been trying to understand how libraries are funded, and, um, the equity index, and understand that whole model. So, for me, where I feel like things have fallen through the cracks is where, how have the principals chosen to spend the non-personnel, uh, budget amount that they were given from the district? What was that amount? How was it spent? Was it spent because there are unmet needs that then we should budget, so that they aren't then taken from the library? Or was, were libraries not valued? You know, what, what went on? Because I think until we take that deeper dive, we don't know, and I don't want to sit here next year and look at these numbers and have them be exactly the same. So, my suggestion would be exactly what you just said, is have principals and librarians tell us what their needs are. You guys tell them where the money went, where, how it was spent, and then they, you come back to us. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Walts?
With that said, I, I would think that part of the recommendation that, um, the principals and librarians would come back with is that the libraries are not funded through the discretionary fund. It's, it's, libraries are not maybes, they're not unforeseen needs, so, um, I, I would think that that's one of those things that seems dictated to a school, so I'm hoping that they advocate for themselves, because I, I, I'm concerned about that as well. Not being able to separate and track what obviously are indicators of there's these unforeseen needs that keep creeping up, and therefore usurping the money from the libraries, that's an indication that there's something else we want to look at.
Commissioner Carey?
Oh, yeah, so I think there's some broader questions for the Board to ask itself. The first is, in my experience, I, there are no unforeseen needs. There are chronic shortages throughout the district. And, you know, if, um, if the art teachers got together, they would come and tell the same story. If the music teachers got together, they would come and tell the same story. If the coaches got together, they would come and tell the same story, but for our amazing boosters. So, it's not that there's one particular group that's, you know, more resource-starved than another. It's that, as a district, I think the question for the Board is, how do we play the right role at the right level in our approach to budgeting? And what are the, what's the framework we're gonna use for that? In the past, we've had line item advocacy budgeting, and it caused the Board to lose sight of the big picture, and how to equitably balance the needs, the under-resourced needs of everybody. So, you know, my question is, how do we, um, approach an issue like this by standardizing the criteria across the district? Um, I think what happened was the Equity Formula came along and helped to maybe correct the budget when it started, but it was starting at a place where libraries were already, um, out of whack. So, IAA and SA were chronically underfunded in the lib, in the library department for years before the Equity Formula, and then the Equity Formula came along, but there was no, like, market correction, for a better word, within those schools. So, at this point, you know, we can't fix every under-resourced issue all at once. What I would recommend is that the district librarian with, you know, the resources available, um, and all the librarians together, come up with a set of criteria for all the, the libraries to look at. Age of collection, by student age, um, the, um, I have a whole list that I sent to Jeff, but they disappeared. Ratio of collection to students, um, the, um, books that are appropriate for kids with special needs, kids with English language learning needs. We heard from the English language teachers earlier this year in their presentation, that they don't have enough resources, so I think that needs to be integrated into this conversation, um, that the, that the curriculum, that the collection used the Vermont Coalition for ethnic studies recommendations. So, I'd like to just see a set of objective standardized criteria that we're actually shooting for. What are we, what do we want these collections to look like? And I think the knowledge lies in our librarians, and it would be great to see a framework for them, them to create a framework that has that, what we're shooting for. And then, evaluate everybody's collection based on that framework, create a scoring system, or whatever, create a dollar amount, whatever, and make that a five-year plan, because we're not gonna correct this in one year unless we short-change another program that's gonna show up next year and say, well, we didn't, now, we didn't get what we need. And, you know, this, our role is not line in budgeting and getting involved at these operation levels. Our role is, does the district have a framework for budgeting that assures equity across the district, and what does that look like? And we need administration people to bring us that recommendation, so that it's objective, transparent, it has metrics, and it has dollar amounts. And then, we have a plan to systematize it for the next three to five years. So, that's the approach I'd like to see.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Commissioner Ivanchuk?
I appreciate everyone's hard work, uh, going into this document. Um, we've got a separate document from Central Office and one from the librarians, um, and I'm curious a little bit about the differences in money. But, just to comment on the document from Central Office, I think it is, it would be possible to take the library budget out of the total school budget. So, right now, each principal gets their own monetary amount, and it's based on, um, as, um, Nate stated, uh, on the equalized pupil count per school. Um, but I'm not familiar enough with what principals have to spend money on that at SA or IAA, the library only ends up with 2,000 bucks, when at Edmonds, it ends up with $8,000. And so, um, I think, uh, I think this, this memo talks about that our, um, resolution is not equitable, um, but I think the way it is spent now is not equitable, and actually, this problem has existed for years. This has been compacted. So, every year, SA Library only gets $2,000, while the one at, um, Edmonds gets, oh, four times as much possibly. Um, I do agree, agree with Commissioner Curry that we need to, uh, systematize this and make it a five-year plan, um, but, um, it's, it's, it's embarrassing that, uh, two schools with really high FRL populations of 75% get such a small amount, monetary amount towards books, when we need to be educating these children and, and, um, you know, narrowing the achievement gap. So, um, I'm in favor of resolutions that support the libraries, and perhaps do a little bit more research about how the principals need to spend money. Um, but I, I would say, and I have not talked to the principals about this yet, that they would be happy to not have to allocate money to their library, if that would just come straight from the budget, straight from the district. Um, I think that would be welcomed by our principals.
Do you want to just speak to that, Commissioner Lavery or Superintendent Bay, when we talk about, you know, why we empower each administrator to have a discretionary fund, or, you know, I mean, briefly, or not? I mean, you tell me.
Well, I know you have a couple of comments, but I just to clarify, in the memo, when you talk about equitable distribution as opposed to an equal distribution, the request was for $8,000 across the Board, and that is an equal distribution, it's not equity. I mean, our schools have different sizes, libraries are different. We wouldn't give the same amount of money to a 200-capacity school as you would to a 400 or 800 school. So, you'd have to find a way to make sure that we distribute it sort of equally. We've always, um, had the approach, the, uh, the dollars are weighted based on the school allocations, so when, and they can speak to this in more detail, in terms of when we send the dollars to the school, then the school, and each principal probably does it slightly different, but they take those dollars and they have conversations with their leadership teams or with their staff, and say, we've got this pile of money this year, what are our needs? And then, they allocate it based on that. We at, at, at the Central Office don't get into that level, because we believe that's jurisdiction. They know what's happening in their schools. And if you look, we would probably collect data from last several years, if we had that, you'd probably see different allocations for different things, right? Because they might decide this year it's a tech year, and so, we need to put more money in the tech, or next year it's an art year. So, there hasn't been, um, um, a, what I call sweatering of dollars, and that's something the Board can also debate over, if they want to get into that in terms of designating, X amount goes to libraries or art, or whatever it is, but then that means that, uh, there's no discretion for the principals, right? And then, they would have to just, okay, that's it. But that's another, that's another piece you need to think about, if you want to do that in terms of going forward, which is fair to do if you choose to, uh, to do that. Um, I know in one, my previous experience, we received funding aligned with, um, uh, every aspect of school funding, so, whether if it's a classroom, a classroom got X amount of dollars because of a classroom, and you had so many students, there was a furniture budget, there was a supplies budget, so it was really allocated out. But, there were certain things that were designated that were discretionary, some that weren't. So, they knew that it could, okay, we don't have to spend all our furniture money on furniture this year, we could spend some on books or something else, right? But, we couldn't touch the pencil line, because we need to have pencils every, whatever it may be. So, there's different ways, but, I mean, at a high level, the Board needs to kind of think about what direction do you want to give for your oversight, and we'll just implement it. But this is how we're implementing it right now, is the, uh, the most discretion comes at the principal level to make those. And we would assume that the principals are making prudent decisions based on their needs in that moment. So, each year is a different snapshot of what's probably been happening, and I would say the new principals who are here wouldn't have that context of what happened last year. They'd have to have conversations with their, um, with their new staff, and kind of look into it and see where we're going for next year. Nate, do you have anything you wanted to add to that?
I think that, that touches all, I guess, though. Well, the one thing I would add, I think, just to make sure we're clear on the language, um, when we talk about the school's budget, and we talk about giving them discretion, giving the principals the discretion to move the money around and make the choices that they think are in the best interest of their students, I think that's a reasonable approach, doesn't mean it can't be done differently. But, I would just say that the, in my mind, what, if, that is different from what I heard, I think a few people characterize it as, which was a principals discretion fund, which sounds more like amount of money for them personally to do something with. And what we're simply saying is, schools get the amount of money that we can provide them in the most equitable way right now that we have come up with to provide it, and then we leave principals the freedom to make the choices on how they spend it, based on whatever particular needs they identify. And that inevitably results in having to make difficult choices for principals in terms of the priorities that they feel that they can meet in any given year.
Can I just add one last thing? I would just say that, I mean, there's, there's all kinds of research and data out there that shows that classrooms across the country are underfunded. So, you start from there. And if, I think if you'd ask our schools and our principals or staff, each department would say that they're underfunded, that they need more. So, we only work with what we have. Um, so, that's, that's a reality. I don't think there'd be a department that if we said, okay, give us your list of what your needs are, wouldn't come up with something. So, that's something you need to think about in terms of, um, the, uh, the domino effect, I guess, going forward.
So, since everybody spoke, we'll go around one last time, to a certain, or maybe not one last time, but at one, one more time, and we'll have the equal time. So, Commissioner Curry?
I just wanted to add something and ask a question, which is that, um, I would also discourage the Board from removing a line item from a building administrator's oversight, because, again, it just sets up a situation in the school where you're pitting one need against another, and then another Board could come along and say, well, we're gonna take the art budget out of the principal's discretion. So, I, um, believe that's a really, you know, bad way, bad road to go down. For Director Lavery, I was wondering if you could explain how the Title I funds of $130,400 that go to the libraries is distributed, what, what the basis for distribution is?
So, uh, the, the reference there, and I'm gonna, if I can scroll here, just so I can point people to where this is coming from. At the, I think it's the bottom of page two, um, yep, at the bottom of page two, uh, we just mentioned that there are additional, in addition to library spending on books specifically, there's other spending on books, and we refer to both, like classroom libraries, for example, as well as, uh, books that are purchased for literacy, um, as part of literacy curriculum. So, I don't believe that those funds are being spent on the libraries, although I can't say that I memorized where all the Title I money goes. So, I, I don't, I don't know the precise answer, but I think, it was not my intent here to suggest that those monies are all going into the libraries. My intent there was to just inform the Board more broadly about, and, and say what I'm excluding from those library budgets, it, um, or, you know, kind of what's not included in there, but is other money that is spent on books, um, whether they go, again, to, to classroom libraries and that sort of thing. So, I wanted to-
Who makes that decision on how they're spent?
Um, so, Title, Title I is predominantly through the, uh, curriculum director, and, but obviously, it has to be done, you know, um, in accordance with the Title I regulations. So, as a district, you don't have complete flexibility on how we use those funds.
Thank you. Commissioner Wick?
Thank you. It, it sounds to me like the resolution I proposed, people don't have an appetite tonight to, what I'll call, top off the IAA and SAA, SA budgets for the current year. So, that doesn't sound like a big winner to me tonight, but what I would, what I am concerned about is if we don't pass some directive tonight, that there hasn't been, for whatever reason, I'm not placing blame on anyone, but there doesn't seem to have been any real proactive thinking on our administration, and I'm not singling out the superintendent or anyone, but no, nobody's owned this. And I believe that unless the Board gives the direction that, or similar direction as I propose down here, this will continue to be sort of an orphan, um, and it won't get done. So, what I had hoped, I'm, I'm a little surprised that Commissioner Carey was not, I mean, I don't think I have your vote on this, but I thought it was what you wanted, which was to give funds tonight. But, I guess, my point is, I think if we leave here and we just pull back, uh, unless we come back at some point soon with some binding direction, I think this kind of just hangs out there like a sailboat without any wind.
I'd like to speak to that. I think we can, when we look at this resolution, starting in the third paragraph, about what the Board strongly encourages the superintendent, um, and we talk about what these schools need and developing a budget, um, and developing a set of criteria, criteria, excuse me, and I don't look at it as jumping through hoops. I look at this, one, with our two new principals, especially at IAA and, um, SA, and education with their librarians about the funding and about what their needs are, but then addressing it across the district at the elementary school level, middle and high school level, because we know these, this situation existed as well here at BHS this year. Um, and so, you know, in looking at this resolution, uh, and giving, the Board giving direction, um, you know, I don't necessarily think we'll lose the wind in its sail, but if we can work on something, uh, or modify this and, and bring it back, you know, potentially on Tuesday, the 15th, uh, giving the, the district direction and assigning it to a committee- 15th, giving the, the district direction and assigning it to a committee here within the, on the Board, the Personnel and Curriculum Committee, to make these meetings happen, that could be a potential. That's my two thoughts. Commissioner Carey?
I have a few things.
Yep.
So I just want to clarify, Jeff, I, I thought your proposal was a nice compromise, but it didn't include the other schools. So I'm passing around now another copy of my resolution, which addresses that issue in number two, and I'm going to read it, it's one sentence. It's just resolve that the district update elementary library funding for SY 1920 to a total of 8,000 for each school. Okay, so I want to get back to that as a possibility. I think we do need to make a decision tonight. I think the monetary decision to remedy part of the issue is something that we should do tonight, and I would be in favor of that. But I need to say a few other things about what I've heard. And, and one is that, you know, the whole five-year approach is fantastic. This is what we should be doing as a district. We should be planning long-term for library funding, and specifically for library funding, because reading is a basic component of education. It's the foundation of our students' learning. So it's not art, it's not gym, it's not even math at this point, it's reading, and especially in the elementary schools. So it's a very serious focus, so I want to point that out. And then I think we also need to think, you know, the, the information that is so shocking to me and the community is the per pupil expenditure column. And that's the result of our current process. Whatever process we've been using at BSD, the result are these widely disparate per pupil spending costs in the different schools. And ironically, it's the schools that we think might need the most are getting the least. So I wanted to point that out. That's the result of what we do now, okay? Secondly, we need to look at the cause. You know, I think that whatever the cause is, personally, I don't care. I don't, I don't care what the principals have done in the past, but there seems to be a breakdown with the way that we do it and the result. The result right now is little kids in libraries around our district doing the best they can to learn, and excellent teachers trying to help them, and they don't have the materials that would help boost them even further in certain schools. So we have to think of the little children, you know, I'm going to quote Keith, Keith uses the word children all the time. We have little kids, cutest little kids, all around the district, and they're not getting what we can provide them quite easily. And I'm thinking of, what is it, 88 million? And what are we talking about, $17,000 or something? I don't know the numbers, but I know it's a minuscule amount compared to our overall budget. So there is an immediate need, there's an immediate need that we can act as a Board to remedy. There's a long-term need that we need to, we need to provide for. And I think, you know, I don't need to talk more about that, but I know that the librarians are meeting regularly, and it's certainly reasonable to assume that the librarians could be almost an independent group within the district to decide where the money goes, where it should go, use the Equity Index, see how it works, kind of every year, every year, and maybe do the principals a favor and separate it from their discretionary funds. And I don't mean going golfing on Friday either, okay? So there are all kinds of ways that we can solve the problem of, of equitable distribution of the funds as we go forward. I hate that expression.
It's okay.
As we go forward. But I think we do need to act tonight, and I think we need to provide the, the schools with the money that's not that much, to bring them up to speed and get the, it's already October, so let's get them going this year, let's continue working with the, and encourage librarians to work together as they already are, and then the whole separate from principal funding can be part of the discussion. But let's do something and not just postpone it again.
Come in, anyone else? Thank you, Commissioner Carey. Commissioner Awal, and then we'll give, everyone has two minutes, and we'll, then we'll call the question.
I, I don't want to see this disaggregate, or taken away from the principals. I think it should be under the principals what we, what we allot here. I, I just want the principals and the librarians to sit down together, figure out what it was that brought us to this, and they need from you guys the last couple of years of spending from prin, for the libraries in order to figure out what has been going on, because four of our sixth-grade schools are new principals. And, and, you know, and then I think they should come back with us, and, and I don't know that, that it's so important that they have money there that they can spend right now. They may need more money than what we're allocating, and I just feel like it should come from both of them, what each of those schools need.
Thank you.
Then come back to us.
Thank you, Commissioner Awal. Commissioner Walz?
I'm still wanting to understand a little bit more about that line item budget, budget line item, just because we're saying, I mean, I totally hear what Liz is saying, I totally hear how we, we really don't understand why it's there, why it's lobbed in there, or what other things might be also underfunded or in need, and I would like to have that full perspective to be able to make a, a more educated decision about it. Is it possible? So that basically, the same thing, in the same way that Kathy's talking about, past expenses, things that actually have been, whatever the records are that were spent in the library, but from that entire, I want to get an idea of what principals are needing this money for, so that I can feel it's in perspective with, not just library, making decisions about library funding, but hearing or understanding how that's going to affect other parts of the program.
Thank you. Director Lavery?
I'm just not sure I'm totally clear on what you're asking for, so let me give you a couple scenarios, and if I get one of them right, you can say that. But it seems like, on one hand, you're like, "Oh, I want to see kind of details and detail expenditures from schools." We can provide that, there's going to be a lot of information, right? Like every little purchase. And I certainly can't tell you what a specific, you know, they, like, what we have from a, in terms of our accounting record, what we have is we have to break expenditures down by certain features, let's call them, of the expenditure, one of which is really useful to us, and again, this is stuff that comes to us from the state, it is a functional, it's called the functional area, and one of them is library. So when the question comes up, like, what are we spending on libraries, I go into the system and I say, "Well, I'm going to pull up that functional area." But within that spending, there could be hundreds, thousands of expenditures, depending on what it is, which I don't imagine that's really what you're after. I think, though, if I was following you, what you were suggesting is, you maybe didn't want to view libraries in a vacuum. You wanted to understand all of the issues. I think probably the more useful way is to have that conversation with principals, because I'm, I mean, we can provide all that data, I'm just not sure if you're going to, you know, saying that we spent $200 doesn't tell you whether that was $200 too much or, or it was $2,000 too little, right?
Considering how little I know about this entire thing, I think any information's going to help.
Just how many other functional areas fall within this?
Okay, that's a good question. We can-
So the more I hear about this, the more I know what questions to ask. But I also think-
Commissioner Awal, I think we're going to ask anyone else? Commissioner Avanji, one minute.
Well, I also would like to understand the budget a little bit better, but I would advocate for taking the library budget, and if we make it equitable, the way you distribute the, the principal budget, per pupil spending, I don't believe that we would be pitting school against school. So each school would get proportional amount to spend on books for the library, and I think that would be an effective way of doing something today. I agree with Commissioner Carey that this, the monetary amount we're talking about is so small compared to the $85 million budget, and that reading is the foundation of learning. And I think that it's important for us to support this in our district. Thanks.
Commissioner Wick?
Point of order, Chair Walz, the motion I introduced is still on the table. I'm not entirely sure if it's all no's, so maybe we just vote and get rid of it, and then we can move on to anyone else who wants to-
Make a motion.
-make another motion, if it goes down.
Great, so you have a second.
Can I ask a procedural question?
Commissioner Carey?
So it's not, we're not going to amend it, we're going to vote for it and then change it, or we could amend it?
Would you like to make a motion to amend the one that's on the table?
Is that, is it, would that be appropriate now to do?
Yes, because it's on the table.
I would make a motion to amend it.
As follows, as how?
To amend Jeff.
And it's, it would be a major amendment.
Major.
Taking dictation, keep it simple?
It's going to be the first two paragraphs of the other resolution. And then the third, Jeannie's working on right now.
Oh, so it's not really this resolution, so why don't we vote this one up or down?
Okay, 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 I get it, okay.
Okay. So all those in favor of Commissioner Wick's motion, that was second by Commissioner Avanji, say aye.
Aye.
So I'll have to do a roll call. So Commissioner Wick is one, Commissioner Avanji? Commissioner Sowers?
No.
Commissioner Carey?
No.
Oh, sorry, I meant Awal. Commissioner Awal?
No.
Commissioner Walz?
No.
All right, so that's four no's. And two, Commissioner Curry? Thank you. Five, one, two, three, four, five, five no's, thank you. All right, thank you, Commissioner Wick. Next would be Commissioner Carey's resolution.
So, should I talk?
No, I think, sorry, what we're going to do is, you need a second for your motion.
Okay, everyone has a copy of it?
Is he doing this one?
Yes.
What resolution is he, are you proposing this one?
Yeah, that one he passed out.
Yes.
Does anyone second his motion?
Do you have another question?
Oh.
We can share.
Bring it to you. Does anyone second Commissioner Carey's motion?
I'll second.
Commissioner Avanji? Thank you. Any discussion?
Sorry, we second.
Commissioner Avanji? Thanks. Any discussion? Commissioner Carey? Oh, Curry, sorry.
Yeah, I would, there were a couple of comments made, I would just be wary of, of a narrative that says our children are not, not getting what they need. That is true, they're not getting what they need in a lot of areas, but they are getting other books in classrooms, and it's not the same as the library. I wholeheartedly agree, our children are not getting what they need in the library and outside of the library for a lot of different reasons. And I would also be careful of the narrative that what we're doing now isn't working. What we're doing now is not working for reasons that the starting point was so out of whack. There were great disparities when we started with the equity formula, and the equity formula has been in place for about three years, and I agree with you, it's not achieving the outcome we want to see, but I wouldn't just blame that on the equity formula, I would say, we need an improved equity formula that achieve, that, we need continuous process improvement. We need to see it adjusted, and we had this conversation earlier this year when we had a presentation about the equity formula, actually, it was when the BAs presented the budget proposal, and we talked about the equity formula, and we asked them to work on it more to address issues just like this, because this has been a chronic issue, it still is. And so I think our job is to say, what we're doing now is not working, because there were structural problems to begin with. We'd like you to go back and improve what we're trying to do to address some of those structural issues, and come back, and we'll make it better. But we're not going to, but this approach, again, I'll just go back to my mantra, line item budgeting, Boards, not the Board's role, ask for a framework and a set of principles that give us, you know, our ability to do our job.
Commissioner Wick?
Speaking to Commissioner Carey's motion, it's in three parts. I do like the first part. The second part concerns me. I think it's too rigid in a few ways. One is, if you look at Director Lavery's table on page two of his memo, there are a few schools who spend more than 8,000, and it appears that we would now be limiting them back down to eight, and thus actually taking something away. And I'm not sure that's justified, I don't think we have the information in front of us to take away from these schools. Namely, it does look like Champlain, we don't know how, we don't have any information, but has been able, within the equity funding formula, to allocate $11,500 of book supplies and materials, and I guess that would be the only elementary school that's above eight, but that's last year. So we don't know that, I just, I just find it concerning because it's so darn rigid. It's highly inflexible. So that's what, that's, not to go back to my motion, it failed, but that's why I limited the 8,000 to the two schools where clearly, in my opinion, they had been underfunded, and I'll just say it, my opinion, chronically, their libraries, again, just my opinion based on what I know. So that's why I was comfortable topping those two schools off, but the top or limit, every school at eight is too rigid. And then, I'm not sure that the third part, resolve that the district consider separating individual library budgets from principal discretionary funds. I guess it's a nice thing to suggest that they consider it, but I'm not sure where it goes. I would want to think more about that. Thank you, those are my comments.
Okay, Commissioner Sowers, and then, everyone has spoken. Go ahead, Commissioner Sowers?
I kind of agree with Jeff over here, I think item two and three are my issues on this. Again, equal funding is not equitable funding, and so I do want to be sure that we don't jump and be reactive without all the information. We want, every dollar counts, and we can say 13,000 doesn't matter and 40,000 doesn't matter, it all adds up. So we need more information, we need information from the librarians and the principals to, if there are these huge inequities, which we think they are at IAA and SAA, I don't think anyone is disagreeing with that. I think that we don't want to jump too soon and make hasty financial decisions without all the information. I also have concern with taking away the principal discretionary funds without talking to the principals and saying, "Give us reasons why this is good," or "Reasons why this is not good." So us sitting here and making these decisions in a vacuum isn't good. So I understand that we want to improve our libraries, and we want to take care of them, and I'm all for that. I just want to be sure we do it right and correctly, and fix what's happening in the future. I also want to ask if there's any checks and balances for principals who are spending money year to year, like, is anyone looking at, when they're putting in these budgets, that IAA and SAA were only given $2,000 for four years in a row, and Champlain had 11,000? Is anyone looking at that, and who's responsible for that?
Can I just clarify a couple points?
One minute, I think that's a really important question that we, we could, we would like to hear.
Yeah, so there's, like, again, we're allocating the money in an aggregate level.
Right.
And in case it's not clear, when we talk about the kind of equity lens, the formula that we've tried to use, that formula doesn't, that formula is just a way of distributing whatever money we have available, right? So, again, if we have $100,000 available, it's going to that formula and being distributed on this kind of basis of these equalized pupils. It's, so it's not building it up and saying, "Oh, well, we, we should just provide more weight to a particular type of thing," or we should, you know, the idea is, like, if you grow the pot, how do we distribute that growth? And, and that's how we've been doing it. So it doesn't dictate how much total money is in that pot, it just dictates how we distribute it. So in terms of the choices that principals make, we have all that, but we don't, like I said, we, we give them discretion to do that, so, and I haven't, I don't think I'm in a position to kind of second-guess that from where I sit.
Yeah, I think it would be valuable to have a conversation with the principals in this, because one of the things, I know in this document it says discretionary funds, they don't have discretionary funds, they have discretion. So when they download the dollar amount, which you use the index to ensure that the most needy schools are getting an allocation that's suitable to their- So when Nate downloads the dollar amount, which he used the index to ensure that the most needy schools are getting an allocation that's suitable to their size and needs, then the principals take those dollars, and they use their discretion to allocate where it should go based on their needs. So it's not a fund that they have, you know, they have, they use, but we don't tell them, we don't say, "Put this much to that and this much," that's, that's what they do. And as I said earlier, principals probably all do it slightly different. Some of them work with their leadership teams, and they come up with, get some information from the, from the, from their teachers and allocate it. And some do a staffing and then allocate the, the funds. Once again, there is a finite pot of dollars, so using the equity fund doesn't mean that we're gonna increase the pot. The pot's the same, it's how we distribute the pot. Previously, we probably did, we distributed the, the, the pot on the same, so everyone got this, 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 and said, "Well, that's not really fair, because this school has more special ed, more EL, more needs, so we should, we should be able to do that." So I would advocate, I would support having principals having the opportunity to have collaboration with their librarians, whatever you decide to do, to talk about how funds are used within that school's jurisdiction.
But again, back to the point of like, the, each school's actual, so at the end of the fiscal year, looking at each school's actual, the board members are saying, you know, it would be glaring to see that the actual at these two schools with their population, you know, or the funding model, so that...
The other thing I would say is that even, if you receive the printout of all, and Nate said you'd get hundreds and thousands of pages. It doesn't accurately reflect what's being supported for those different initiatives. So if we were talking about, I'll use something different, like tech or something, there's a tech function that we pull up and say, "Oh, we only spent hundred dollars on tech, but we actually spent money from over here on new computers, we actually spent mon, funds from here on something else, so there's more dollars spent on tech." So that, I would assume that's the same issue with libraries, right? If I talk to the principals and they would say, "Oh, what did you spend, or how did you get this?" They would put the other streams that they're saying, "Oh, we're feeding this need by this way," it's not necessarily just from that particular function. So that's why the conversations are important, because it tells you, okay, no, we didn't neglect that, this is what we did, because these are situations, and we actually got some money over here, and we used this money over here. And Nate, in his presentation, really just said that they have the discretion to, to transfer dollars over as well. So they might be spending money from another spot to pay for some more resources, because there's a need that has to happen, a special ed need or something, and they, and they do that within. So the straight numbers, I don't think give you all of the story, the conversations also give you another piece to round out the, the story as well, too, so.
Thank you. Great, so Commissioner Awal, you've spoken, Commissioner Carey, last.
I just wanna clarify the eight thousand figure. It came from one of the, one of the charts that we got, and it was the elementary school library budgets twenty eighteen nineteen. That's the highest number, and it's under Edmunds. That's where the eight thousand came from, okay? So the, the other numbers over, you know, ten thousand, whatever, over, I'm not sure where, where that, how that relates. But that's why the eight thousand was used. And, and a couple of other points about this resolution, there are three parts to it. It's fine to get rid of part three, in order to make some progress tonight. And, and I'm just gonna review part one again. Part one is to get the library, interlibrary group going, and I believe they already function. I'm not sure that district leadership is involved in that. This resolution would require district leadership to be involved in an interelementary school librarian council. On a regular basis, minutes, preparat, district-wide vision for library funding. That's, that's why that mentions district leadership in that particular resolution. The second resolution is the same as we did last time, when, when the superintendent needs permission from the board if he has to exceed the fiscal year twenty twenty budget. So this resolution gives him that permission, just like we did a couple of weeks ago, something. Whether or not that's gonna be necessary, we don't know, because it's not that much money. I mean, Kendra, I hear what you're saying, it, it really isn't. And it, it would make such a difference in climate if we were to make this move. And people are aware that climate has changed dramatically in the district in the last year or so. It's changed dramatically, and it's on the upswing. And this would be another example of this board acting proactively in speci, on specific issues that are concerning to our constituents. And everyone saw the emails, the numbers of emails. You know, it's, it's one thing to meet face-to-face with people in meetings, but this is the twenty-first century.
Thank you, yep.
I've been cut off?
No, last, I was just saying, finish, if you can think of your...
You know, it's, the emails and the communication methods, methods that we use are valid, are absolutely valid. And I am just flabbergasted by the eloquence and the commitment that people I don't even know have said on this issue, okay?
Thanks, I think we would speak to the board, in, in speaking to board members as well. The only concern, or one of, one of the concerns is that when we, when we target a school that has budgeted their eight thousand dollars, or, and, and their principal, you know, we don't have the full, as a board, we do not have the full story of why those schools were able to secure their funds. So going off a number, any number, does not give us an educated process, formula, approach, criteria. So the concern that I know board members will speak to, Commissioner Carey, is that that number is not reflective of when we look to IAA and SA, what do they need for their budget? We're making a decision based on another school's budget, and that's concerning. And that's why in, in Nate, Director of Finance, in his last paragraph, he said, "The board could direct the superintendent to reallocate funds from other areas for the immediate concerns to get these two schools and, and potentially others that we've noted that are potentially in need of an analysis, but working with those librarians and working with their principals to allocate those funds." The district will be working with us, again, like I said, this has taken them time to present this memo. I appreciate everybody's work. We would not have been aware of this situation if it wasn't for the dedicated work of our librarians. They brought it to our attention. We brought it to the district-level attention. The district has responded, it has been five days since their response. We need to meet at the committee level, I would ask that Commissioner Carey and Commissioner Awal follow through on this, whether we, not whether, follow through on this for your number one part of your resolution, and to lead finding out more information and asking these schools to create a budget. Instead of mirroring another school's budget, why, why don't we ask IAA and SA to create a library budget that would meet their needs?
Just to answer, this resolution doesn't prohibit that. I think that's what we should be doing, but it's October. We have our schedule already mixed, we have our next meeting all set for November, that's gonna bring in December, January, February, it's gonna be just a snowball, and nothing's gonna happen.
Understood.
So this doesn't prohibit that, it encourages it. The eight thousand, again, is a, is a, is a random number, this, that number, you know, when we, when this topic first came up...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to ask you to stop, just so that we can move on, because I've given you the floor, but I appreciate, I appreciate what you have to say.
I'm being cut off, I'm being cut off, I wanna explain.
I know, but we've all had a fair amount of time, and we do have a full, a rest of the agenda.
Is someone calling the question then?
That's what I'm gonna ask, unless you...
I didn't hear it.
I'm, I'm gonna call the question. Commissioner Wick, did you have something you want, I thought you had?
No, I was just gonna maybe suggest that, Commissioner Carey, would you be willing to wrap up so we could vote?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so, number one, number two, number three, Jeannie has, it would be the last paragraph on your resolution, Jeff. With just a couple of edits.
But it referenced getting information back, I can just read it out loud.
Yeah, just read it out loud, please.
Except in extreme cases, the board prefers to make proactive budgeting decisions rather than reactive remedial allocations. We request principals and librarians collaborative, collaboratively provide library budgeting recommendations for the board to review for the following school year budget in a timely manner. But I know we had talked about putting a timeframe on stuff so that we can review when we're making budget decisions.
Point of order, what's that, how does that match, where does that fit into Commissioner Carey's?
That is the third.
It's instead of three.
Instead of what was...
Cross out three.
And you went so fast that the Robert's Rules of Order suggests that the resolution be entirely clear and unambiguous, so it might take Bonnie, who's I think our note taker here.
Well, yeah, I can, I can share it with you right now.
All right, so, I can read it.
Just for, just a suggestion, once you clarify, can we actually get the final resolution on the screen so everyone can see it? So we make sure we have clear direction, so we'll... No, she doesn't have it, but once it's done, we'll, let's project it so everyone can actually see.
Commissioner Ivanchik, we need you.
If there's any, were there any other edits that you made?
No, no. No? Positive. One and two are the same, it's just the three is Jeff's plus a few edits, right? Can you get that on the screen, what you have?
Yeah, just, yeah.
Thanks, Jeff.
Chair Wall, well, there's a little bit of quiet, maybe. Commissioner Carey, how does this eight thousand handle a school that by virtue of its, its budgeting discretion, is able to spend a little more? Like, are you limiting that school, and you're saying you may not do that? We're gonna need clarity, I'm gonna need clarity before I vote yes.
I don't really understand the question.
Let's say Champlain Elementary School, which according to Nathan was able to use the equity funding and spend its discretionary funds in a way that spent eleven thousand dollars on its library last year. And if past this prologue, they might be able to do that again this year. And is your resolution limiting them to a cap of eight?
No, the word total could be changed to minimum. In, in resolution number, letter two, number two, second line, to a minimum of eight thousand, that would solve that problem.
So you're accepting my friendly amendment to a minimum?
Sure.
Do you wanna put that in there, or?
Of eight thousand for each school. And you're accepting Commissioner Walts's friendly amendment for the replacement of the existing paragraph three?
Yes, which is your paragraph four. Yes, minimum.
So as far as getting things in time to review for the budget, do we say in a timely manner, or do you wanna say, I know Jeff, at one point, you had put a forty-five day limit on getting information back. That was the first resolution that we did not vote through.
Okay.
Can we just get that?
It's at the bottom, Bonnie, maybe you wanna scroll down?
But get rid of the total.
There you go.
To a total of a min...
Right, right, there's some still cleanup on the line where the cursor is? To...
A minimum of...
Okay, strike the word of, second line, paragraph two? Who's, 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 Jeannie? Jeannie, paragraph two, strike the word of, which is like the third or fourth, yeah, that makes sense, the minimum, and then add the word of before the eight thousand?
Of eight thousand?
Yes, of, minimum of.
And is that your proposed language in paragraph three now, Jeannie, are you good with that?
I'm feeling like there's not a time on here. For the board to review for the following school year budget, should we say in a timely manner?
No, because everybody knows we're starting budgeting season right now, is my thought. Like, right, Nate, aren't we about to start the budget process?
Yes.
Okay.
But I would certainly recommend you consider giving them a date certain, because you don't just wanna get their recommendation within the budget process, you probably wanna have it in time to consider it in light of other requests.
Yeah, November first, right.
Something that gives you enough time to chew on, I don't know if it needs to be November first, but maybe December first would be suitable.
Would, would it, would forty-five days be a reasonable amount of time?
Uh, this, this is like an in general thing, and this could, so we can read this next year.
I think Director Lavery is saying, if we want it to be meaningful for this cycle, we want it earlier, we want it sooner rather than later.
Which brings me, you know, again, which brings me to the question of, we're working on a resolution, and yet we're budgeting, our next meeting is about budgeting. I'm very concerned about being reactive, Commissioner Carey, and I, I do believe, I haven't had any face-to-face meetings with the librarians and these principals. And I, my statement is just that I, I, we are beginning this process, it's been made aware to us, and that we approach this in the budgeting vein with all the other departments, but understanding that we are deeply concerned about these inequities. So I'd like to call the question, the resolution is complete?
I would, I would suggest you amend the, the time for my doubt, if the group would be to get together and have something from October now. I doubt they'll meet your timeline on November first.
What about forty-five days?
Yeah, but a number would be good, because we need to give them a hard date.
December, he had said December first. He had said December first.
December first?
Twelve one.
Sorry, do we wanna do the FY school year, do we wanna, instead of saying following school year?
It's already in there.
We're good, okay.
All right, so Commissioner Carey's, we had a second from Commissioner Ivanchik, so we'll vote on the resolution as amended? Okay, I'll do a roll call.
And I have Keith on the phone.
Was Keith?
Keith Pillsbury.
Just a few clarifications, I wanna make sure that we have a clear path. In that number three, it says, "To make proactive budgeting decisions rather than reactive," we request principals and librarians collaboratively. I know that Chair Wall initially had said that the curriculum committee lead that way, and then that, this one says request, so who's, this, this is a committee that you're forming, really, right? It's a committee, the goal is to have a committee to get together, made up of principals and librarians, to develop a budget and a budget process for the budget. That's what, that's what you're really asking for, right?
Well, it's not specified, the word committee's not in there, is that?
I know, it's not.
No, but that...
But he's looking for direction.
We're requesting principals and librarians collaboratively, collaboratively to work together, should it have said work together?
No, I'm just saying it's, it's kinda loose, okay, in terms of, if I were to take this right now and send this to our principals after the system's even said, this is the resolution. Right, I mean...
So if, if you strike the word, just a suggestion, strike the word collaboratively and put as a committee, is that what you're...
Yeah, 'cause that's, I think that's what you're asking for, you're asking for a group to come together and do this work, and present it to the board by December first, right?
Okay, that's for next year, for the budget working.
That's for next year, yeah, that's number three.
We still haven't done anything about this year.
And that's number two.
I know, that's number two.
The work committee has a specific meaning in this group, it has a specific meaning.
Right, okay, change the work committee.
Collaboratively is a, is a more general meaning, that means basically the same thing, it's a better word, because committee is a whole different deal when you talk about board, board committees. When you use the word committee, you're saying something different.
How about as a team, I think I heard that.
Sure, sure.
Okay, are you asking, sorry, are you asking the superintendent to strike this group to establish this, or is this led by one of the committees? Like, the curriculum committee gonna establish this group, like, who?
I think it was you.
It was me?
I think it was the internally, we're saying, hey, do it.
Do it.
That's, I'm trying to get clarification to make sure that...
Yeah, that's the intent.
But for the eight thousand dollars, I think we should have the two librarians and the two principals working together and coming to us with a budget for that. Short term and long term is what you're saying. I'm saying for both, we...
I don't think we should complicate this too much, never gonna... I guess, how are you a little, how can you be a little bit pregnant, I don't, I don't understand.
You don't have any, you don't have enough information to make that call on them.
Then vote no, oh, sorry, but then we can vote no.
Okay.
I'm sorry, I, all I mean is, I think that that's what he's asking for, that's what the proponent is asking for. Okay, well then, that's between them.
Why, why this week versus next week?
Okay, all right. So Commissioner Pillsbury just joined.
Yeah, a little bit of help.
Okay.
I've heard it all.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Perfect, I just wanted to make sure, so the public knows. All right, so we have Commissioner Pillsbury on the line, and then we'll go, we'll vote on the resolution. So all those in favor will go around the room. Commissioner Curry. Commissioner Wick.
Yes.
Commissioner Avanček.
Yes.
Commissioner Sowers.
No.
Commissioner Alwell.
No.
Commissioner Walts.
Yes.
Commissioner Carey.
Yes.
Commissioner Pillsbury.
Yes.
Okay, so I have one, two, three, four, five, fi- five yeses and three nos. Great, so the resolution passes. And we would look to clarification from Commissioner Carey on the information that superintendent needs. And I would instruct ideally the personnel and curriculum committee to be that committee, the two of you, and that we'll work together. Okay, thank you. All right, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is, thank you, Tom, for waiting. The chair's report, VHS BTC update with Tom Peterson. Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
Okay, I, I think this'll be fairly quick. This is a, an update on the status of the Burlington High School VHS re-envisioning project. I think at our last, the last update, I was informing you that the SD, the schematic design estimates came in about twenty-one million dollars higher than, than what we were hoping for. So in, in the last month, month and a half, our, our team has been working at coming up with options for finding a way to, to save costs. And so far, we're, we're, we've probably found about fifteen thousand or fifteen million of, of that twenty-one million that we're, that we were over. It will mean some reduction in scope and some redesign. And I think maybe revisiting some of the design directives that were developed over the last five years or so. Let me get into a couple details here. Looks like we're gonna, we will have to revisit the design directives and scope. We will probably have to consider keeping property services on Schulen Road. It will probably involve, involve using more of the existing buildings and have less new construction. Part of the reason for this is that the renovation costs on a square foot basis are significantly less than the square foot cost for, for new construction. So if we can find a way to keep some of the buildings, right now we're looking at keeping building D, which had originally been slated to be removed. If we can keep building D, that, that helps that equation. There's a possibility that you may end up having to go try to find additional funding through grants or fundraising capital campaigns, but it's really clear that we cannot go back to the voters. The seventy million dollar bond is a, is a cap, it's, it's, that, that is our mandate. So what have we been doing since the estimate came in? The, the team, mostly our architects and the construction manager came up with, I believe it was about eight different options for redesign and reconfiguring to try to, to save some money. Most of those did not really dig deep enough and did not achieve the kind of savings that we needed. We did finally select, the building committee basically directed that team to, to find a hybrid of some of the things we liked from each of those eight options. And they created a, an option that we thought would, would meet most of the goals and be closer to, to meeting the budget. We're not there yet budget-wise, but we're, we are getting a lot closer. It's very encouraging. The, the team has been really focused on this, and we're, we're, we're very encouraged. There's still an uphill climb, but we have made some progress. So right now, and this, this is subject to change, but the way that things are looking right now, the, the square footage is gonna shake out this way. So the existing square footage of the total facility is, is just under two hundred and forty thousand square feet. When, if we demolish buildings C and E, then that removes forty-one thousand square feet. We would renovate one hundred and ninety-six thousand square feet, have new construction of seventy-four thousand square feet with a proposed net square footage of the, of the renovated facility at two hundred and seventy thousand square feet and change. Like I said, this is subject to change, and we may have to keep whittling away at the, at the new construction piece of that in order to, to be able to meet the budget. It does, as we mentioned last, at the, at the last update, and I believe there were committee members and, and commissioners that were supporting this, we, we don't wanna, we don't wanna rush this process just for the sake of getting in the ground and getting the construction started next year. We were all hoping that 2020 would be the, the, the start. But when we, we sat down with the team this week and really looked at all the steps that need to be taken to, to get us to a construction start, and this is, this is really the revised schedule as it stands right now, it does not look like we will be able to be in the ground in 2020. So we would have, I, I don't, you, you can read it. I'll have to read this off to you. That, that's really all I have for update right now. I think, um, I'm, I'm sorry, there, there was another slide that was, that we're missing. I gotta get to it here. There we go. I, I kinda jumped over that one. So this, this is the concept that we're, that we're currently working with. To orient you, here, here's the student parking lot, here's the, the athletic complex, there's building F, BTC, North Avenue here, Institute Road here. So as you may recall, we found that this area of the, of the site is not really suitable for building. It's possible, but it's incredibly expensive to do. The, the soil conditions there are not suitable for buildings, which means we have to, we would have to bore holes fifty feet into the ground and then five feet into bedrock and, and build piers up from there. That's really not cost effective. What we, what we're showing here is a small bit of construction to the south of the gym, but that would be, and this is an alternative, this is something that everyone on the committee would like to see happen. This would be a one-story corridor, basically, that helps provide some circulation in the chorus music area with connections over to the, to the west side of, of the lower level of A building. This would be the location for the auxiliary gym, just to the east of the auditorium. That would achieve the goal of, of basically helping the, the facility to have a new facade, which was one of the factors that people, people wanted. New entryway here, and then this, this would be a three-story new construction that would tie building A to building B. And there'd also be some circulation within this, this area here that would help with circulation of building B on, on the upper floors. We have a new connector to building F and new connector in classrooms here between building B and building D. These white boxes here, what that would have been, that's building C, that's building E, that'll eventually go away.
Thank you, Tom, very much. Any questions, Commissioner Carey?
So you said B will stay, building B will stay?
Building B would stay.
And which one is that? That's the little one?
Right here is, that's building B. Which is right, right up there.
And so what happened to the envelope around the gym? That's gone?
Yeah, that, that, that represented a lot more new construction, and it just, we just can't afford it.
It was because of the soil?
Part of it was because of the soil. That, that old SD plan created some addition over here in the south, southwest corner and across the whole south facade and along the east. It kind of wrapped building, building A.
Yeah.
And there was, there was a lot of new construction down here in, in, between the auditor, between the gym and Institute Road. And that's the area that's not really conducive to building.
Commissioner Alwell.
So putting that wraparound on the building was to insulate it and bring more light in and all that. What happens? Are we still left with the same old facade or?
That isn't fleshed out yet. Good question, though, we don't, this.
Well, we don't from the south side.
From, from the south side, this building, building corridor on that south side will allow us to get some windows in, into the, into the music area. It doesn't give us the full envelope wrap that we had hoped to achieve, but that's, again, we can't afford it.
Commissioner Wick.
Couple of quick questions. So now we're keeping, just so I understood, we were not gonna keep building D like Delta, but now we are? That's one of them?
That's correct.
And D is which one? Sorry.
That's D right there.
Got it, okay. And then you mentioned that it would require some compromises in design directives and scope. Is it simple to articulate in a couple words what we're compromising, what that means?
We don't know what those compromises will be yet. The, the design directives were developed over the course of several years with lots of public input and faculty and student input and administrator input. And it's a really, really long list. It's quite a, quite a larger list of design directives. So we may get to a point where some of those have to be ranked, and some of those may have to be eliminated. But we're not at that point right now. We, and as, as a building committee, I don't think we are empowered to make those decisions. I mean, those were wishes and needs that were expressed by the community at large. It's not, it's not our prerogative to, to, to make those kind of cuts and those decisions.
So presumably, if you have to do that, you'd come back to the board with a very clear memo of what you're asking us to change.
Yeah, that's, that's right. Our, our goal is to really analyze those design directives and, and match up as much of, of those directives with what we can afford and what the, what we can achieve through an affordable design, and then make recommendations to you.
And then I'll stop after this, I apologize and thank you. But, so it sounds like if I heard you right, from being twenty-one over, we're now only about six over in our estimate right now?
Roughly, and that's still not a hard and fast figure, 'cause we're, we're still awaiting the, the full impact of what the PCB situation will be. There's been extensive testing on materials throughout the building, and our consultant is putting together a, an abatement plan and an estimate for what that would cost. So that, that's still a big wild card.
What are PCBs?
Poly.
Poly?
No, no, but like what?
Well, the PC, they're chemicals that.
Some kind of bad chemicals.
Bad chemicals.
On the bad list. Okay, on the bad.
Bad chemicals that people used to think were just in, in electrical transformers, but they're, they can be found in ballast, they can be found in paint, they can be found in, in caulking. And it's becoming more of a, more of a concern in public buildings. Thank you.
Last question, Commissioner Alwell.
What is this, so there's two questions that I assume that's.
Yes.
D and.
C, C and E.
C and E. And so we're getting rid of those, but what's the little building behind?
That one right there?
No, with that, and the one.
Heating plant?
Way up there, yeah.
Right there, that's the woodchip plant.
Oh, okay.
That was built in about two thousand and four, I think.
Storage.
And this is the, um, I believe that's the gas boiler, I think, the gas house. We, we don't know if that's gonna stay or go, but it's, it's not occupiable space.
Well, when those two others go, they just, is that gonna be parking or what is that? Or it's just gonna be back to the layup?
To be determined. We're, we're, we're hoping that this configuration will also reduce our site costs. Our site work costs for the previous plan were astronomical. I mean, we were talking, I don't wanna misquote, but it was, it was in the millions of dollars for site work. And, and we think we can reduce that somewhat. Where Marty and I in particular are really pushing the architects and the construction manager to, to really focus on things like systems, building materials, architectural details, things like that that can be, that can be cut. Because we can, we don't necessarily need a Cadillac HVAC system. We need a good, working, reliable, efficient HVAC system. But it doesn't have to be the absolute best in the world. The, the current estimate for HVAC or the mechanicals for, for the last go-around was over twenty million dollars, and that's, that's just not, not doable. So the, the point there is to try to focus on, on the, on, on the kind of savings that won't take away from programming, that we still get the new facility, they still get the upgrades that we need for a good maintainable building, but we also have the, the kind of programming space that everybody needs.
Thank you very much, Tom. The board appreciates the update and your work, and thank you for staying as long as you did, given our deliberations. I really appreciate that. And the next meeting for board members, for the public, is next Thursday, October seventeenth here at VHS. We'll be meeting in A three.
Two, two.
Oh, excuse, A three.
A three, two, A three twenty-two.
A three twenty-two, the aviation room.
Is it what committee meets?
It's the BCOC committee, so for the Burlington, yep. Thank you again, Tom. Moving on the agenda, we are, we approved the consent agenda, but we have one item, the routine hiring financials. Yeah. So any questions about the routine hiring recommendations that Commissioner Avanček pulled? pulled? She left. So I would like, if I could, a motion to approve the hiring recommendations. A motion? Commissioner Carey, thank you. A second. Commissioner Awal, all those in favor of approving the hiring recommendation, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The hiring recommendations pass. Next is back to the superintendent's report with the BTC update. Thank you, BTC update. Thank you.
Sorry?
That's all right.
Commissioner Carey, that is how you do it. Just a quick update on BTC hiring. You did receive a quick note that I sent via Director Anderson Brown. She's not here today. She's on a professional development trip, but I will attempt to give you some of the updates. Not much different from what you received via email, that she has been able to establish a hiring committee inclusive of staff there. I think the majority of the committee are inclusive of new members, so people have stepped up to want to join the process. I know that we have received applicants, the pool, and I think we're very close to having enough qualified applicants to start the process. One of the real challenges was Director Anderson Brown finding the appropriate training around the unconscious implicit bias training for the team, but she has secured the training that will take through the team and then be able to start the process as soon as possible once the training is completed. The last piece I'll bring up is in the last couple of weeks, Director Anderson Brown, Principal Bonnie Johnson, and myself have been having conversations with BTC staff in terms of the work that's happening up there. We also have communications from different avenues, whether it's the regional advisory board, different state agencies, including the Agency of Education, and identified there is some critical work that needs to get done, that needs individuals who have the tech background and have experience at BTC to fulfill that. We have an individual in the school that's willing to step up and take ownership of those tasks, as well as play the supervisory role if needed for the staff as well, too. I have not brought that forward, because I know the board did not support having an interim during this phase, but I do believe that it's necessary to have someone who has this experience and has the understanding of what's happening in order to ensure that we have full compliance for the next month or two as we go through the process to find a permanent staff. So if the board is favorable in me bringing that forward, I would bring that on the next consent agenda to provide this person the authority to assume the interim role at BTC.
Great. So you're looking for approval?
I'm looking for-
Yeah, okay. So we have identified an employee at BTC to work in the role and the capacity to supervise what's necessary, work with the superintendent over the next three months until we, with our HR director, have hired a permanent director. Yeah, okay. So the way I would handle that, we would ask that, all those in favor of giving the superintendent the support to pursue that avenue that he'll bring to the next board meeting? Everyone? And so all those in favor?
I have a question.
Sure.
It's not really a resolution.
Not a resolution.
I do have a second, and we didn't have discussion. So if it was a poll, that's great.
It was a poll.
But I do have a question. So my question is, another week is going to go by. When is the posting going to close and when are interviews going to begin?
Yeah, I think the posting is going to be ongoing, and Director Anderson Brown's not here today, but I know next week she will do an assessment to determine if she has enough candidates. We only want to do it once. We don't want to have to go through the process and then have to repost again. So she's doing some background to ensure that the candidates that we have in the pool have the appropriate qualifications before she calls for the actual interview process, so we can just do it once. So next week, she'll do, when she gets back, she'll be able to do the analysis and give us some clearer timelines.
And what would represent enough candidates?
I think we just want to be confident that we've got more than one person who has qualified credentials, so we can have some choice. I believe from what I've been told last week, we did have several applicants, that's as much as I can, that have put their names forward. So she will do the analysis to ensure that those people actually meet the requirements before going forward.
So do we need a resolution, or can we just- Provide a request that we get the information about the goal to have this person perform administrative duties?
Yeah, it was just the endorsement.
But could we also have more concrete answers? I don't know about an ongoing post. I'd like to have a date certain when interviews begin, assuming there's, you know, a pool, like three qualified candidates. I think we don't want to drag this out too long.
Thank you, Commissioner Carey.
I don't think you do need a, I mean, I'd be happy to have a resolution, but I don't think you do need a resolution. What my intent would be, if we're getting sort of support, then I would bring it on consent agenda as we would do other hires and say, this is the person that's going to be contracted for the next three months or whatever, and then the board would hopefully approve that. Commissioner Curry has other questions. I would invite the board to send also any additional questions you may have, so then I will share it with Director Anderson Brown when she returns, and then have her look into that and have a response back.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. So yes, Commissioner Sowers.
Who else was added then to the hiring committee you said some staff were added?
Yeah, let me, you know, I'd rather not say that.
I was going to say-
But it's on your, I sent the communication to you on email.
So we'll follow up. I know where your question is, so I'll follow up.
There's an additional.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there is, there is.
Just, okay.
Yes, got it.
Okay.
All right, so you received endorsement, and I understand superintendent's request so that he goes through the motions with HR with this BTC individual. We are aware that he's proceeding in this manner. We endorse that, and we look forward to seeing it on the consent agenda. Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Great feedback. All right, thank you, Superintendent Obang. Next is, okay, back to the committee reports. In finance and facilities, I have a, it was posted recommendation, recommended motion to read to the board, or if you want to review the motion, from the Finance and Facilities Committee that the Burlington Board of School Commissioners recommend to the city council to authorize and direct the chief administrative officer to pledge the credit of the city by issuing negotiable bonds in the amount of $6 million in fiscal year 2020 for needed school capital improvements. This $6 million authorizes, authorization is inclusive of $2 million of annual borrowing allocated to capital improvements pursuant to Section 62F, three of the Burlington City Charter, and $4 million of $70 million of borrowing pursuant to the voter approval on November 6, 2018, for the Burlington High School renovation. Do I have a second? Commissioner Carey, any discussion? Commissioner Wick.
I have a question about this resolution, maybe-
Motion?
Yes, motion. Given the delay in the high school construction timelines, et cetera, do we still need to allocate this much at this time?
Great question.
Oh, thanks.
I don't know what the answer is. $4 million was what we had envisioned doing in the first year. It may be more than we need, but I would say at this point, there are enough variables that I'd rather have too much than too little, so I decided to keep the $4 million on there. That's what we budgeted to support in this year as well. So just to help folks understand, if we borrow that $4 million, and let's just say the work that we do over the next fiscal year only costs us $3 million, we just hold on to that money, and that is the first $1 million toward whatever we're spending on the high school the next year. So it doesn't go away or anything like that. Yeah, we have it one year earlier than we would, but we won't know, you know, with any certainty, like exactly how much that'll be, so that's why we kept with the budgeted amount.
Commissioner Curry.
Does it help to add the up to language, up to $4 million?
Well, in this case, no, because the-
Does it help the exact?
Yeah, because what the, so the purpose of this, this is requested by the city's bond council, so this is a reminder, the city is ultimately the entity that borrows this money, it's on their faith and credit, so the city council needs to direct its staff to borrow. And so what they do every year is they collect this from us, from the Burlington Electric Department, for example, and they do a city council resolution that says, the city CAO will borrow this much money, of which some is for the schools and some is for the city's, you know, roads or whatever, and some is for BD, et cetera. So we do need to give them a specific number, and they're going to go out and do this at one time. Again, I don't, there's not a major issue with borrowing $4 million if it turns out to be a little more than we need. And also, while we don't, we can't predict what future interest rates will do, they're still pretty low, so having that extra money borrowed at a time when the rate's a little lower won't hurt either.
Can I just follow up?
Yes.
I guess I was suggesting that rather than us tell you to borrow $4 million, you guys work it out, but then we're just authorizing it? Or do they need us to tell them?
No, they need it from the city. They are, so the city needs it from the board. They want the board formally to say to the city, this is the amount of money we want.
Okay, so you can't actually say, oh, it looks like we only need 3.8?
Not at this stage, no.
Good question. Thank you. Anyone else? Commissioner Wick.
Follow up. Do we have any idea how much? I mean, I hear what you're saying is, this is close enough. If we have a little more, we'll put it in the bank, but how could it be a big discrepancy? My concern is if we borrow, say, $3 million more than we actually need, the interest we pay on that bond for a year, $3 million times the rate for one year.
Right.
Certainly a lot more than we'll get by putting it into the savings account at a minimal rate, is my guess.
In a sense, yes, but keep in mind, you're expecting to borrow this money and then repay it over a term of 30 years. So whether you borrow it in 2019 and repay it over 30 years, or 2020 and repay it over 30 years, you're going to be paying that interest. So what you're, essentially, by having that money for one extra year, even though you have it before you need it, yeah, and you are earning a little bit of interest on it, it's not going to offset the borrowing costs, but it's not like we're going to repay the money faster if we didn't need the money until the next year. So if we didn't borrow this money until the next year, we borrow it the next year and repay it over 30 years. Does that make sense?
I think it does, yeah.
I think it didn't quite hit the mark.
I think it does. I get it.
Yeah, and it's also a matter of, while, I would say, I think, I don't know, in my judgment, I think it's better to have the money-
Yeah.
-that we need at this stage. We don't want to have to stop something, especially if we're already looking at delaying construction a year, because we're like, whoops, we just were kind of petty-wise and pound foolish in that respect, not to be too pejorative of it, but that's why I think it's still reasonable.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you for taking the time to explain it. Good questions. Thank you. All right, moving on. All those in favor of the resolution that had a first and a second, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. The motion carries. Next on the agenda would be the committee reports. I have one more resolution. Yeah, pre-K, thank you. Sorry, I have to pull it up. Thank you.
We'll talk about that.
Okay, resolution for pre-K. I'd like to make a motion for the following resolution. On behalf of the Finance and Facilities Committee, whereas the board has received the report of the pre-K task force, whereas the board believes in data-driven process in order to decide upon an appropriate solution to better meet the needs of the preschoolers in our community, whereas the board believes in considering various options to meet those needs of preschoolers to arrive at a fiscally sound plan for the district respecting the taxpayers, now therefore, as resolved by the board as follows, the superintendent will assign staff and other district resources to support the work of the Facilities and Finance Committee to investigate various options for meeting the needs of preschoolers and their financial impact and timeline for completion. B, the board directs the Facilities and Finance Committee to report its findings and recommendation to the board with financial projections as soon as possible, but no later than December 17th. Do I have a second? Commissioner Awal? Any discussion? Commissioner Curry?
Again, I think this is the kind of thing that doesn't require a resolution. It can be a request of the superintendent to turn the administration's attention to this issue now. The administration already spent over $250,000 on this a few years ago, so I think it means just asking the administration to consider all of the work that's been done since then, take it into account, and have the staff address all of the issues that were raised, and the concerns, and the requests, and the plans, and give them a deadline to bring all that back to the board. I think it's just the second iteration of doing something that happened a few years ago.
Well, just to be clear, we did, we just think in this particular case, it was appropriate because the work that had been done in the past was specifically stopped by virtue of action that the board took at that time, so we felt like it was appropriate. The board, in a formal way, stopped it, so when they're ready to restart it, that should be just as formal.
Commissioner Wick.
Yeah, because I think what part of this involves to support your committee is paying architects to do some more drawings and, you know, thinking and all the time and effort involved. I'm just a little concerned that there's no limit on it. How do we, how do we make sure that it doesn't get too expensive, this exploratory endeavor that we might be approving tonight? How do we, do we limit it?
I can answer that after. Superintendent Obang, did you want to say that?
No, well, I wasn't going to answer that, but I was just saying, in terms of, and Marty presented some information last week, and I know board members had questions about, what is this, and how much is this, how much is that? And I think he reminded everyone that there was a board motion to halt all work. So hence, I'm assuming that's why the Facilities Committee is coming forward and saying, now we're going to give you direction to say, you can go back and start doing the work on this. In terms of the amount of dollars, I don't know if you can put a number to it at this point? Like, I couldn't without Marty here to give an analysis on it, but-
And maybe I'm not suggesting we do that, because I do like to keep things flexible, but are there some ways we can keep tab, like would the Facilities Committee sort of commit to keep an eye on the bottom line as to how much it's causing to be spent by architects and other professionals, and keep tabs, and maybe bring it to the group occasionally to see if it's, you know what I mean? We just, I just don't want, I don't know where this comes from. Does this come from the budget, or is this outside the budget?
Yeah, that's one of the things Nate might want to chime in on, but this would be work within our existing budget, so we're not acquiring dollars from anywhere else outside of what already happens with our budget. So if Marty's the primary person here, he'd be accessing his pool of money that he has in order to do the design work, right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, he could do that, but I mean, also, this, we have borrowed money for the, for, this would be from the capital funds for the non-BHS capital initiative, right, which this is part of. So architectural work is part of all of that, all those projects, and so this would be kind of from that same source of money, which we do have.
Commissioner Awal.
Yeah, I just wanted to know, is this looking at new buildings? Have we spread the re-
It's taking into consideration the task force recommendation, and then coming back to you with the Finance and Facilities recommendation.
Because I just found it interesting. He just said it was far cheaper to redo existing buildings per square foot cost than it was to do new construction. And we have been told up till now that it was the other way around, that it was cheaper to do-
I think clarification is at BHS, given the landscape and giving the testing that's been done on site, and the fact that, the reason why, I mean, two separate, two separate properties, but yes, good, I'll follow up with Director Spalding, I couldn't think of his name on that. Yep. Okay, so all those in favor of this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, thank you. The resolution passes. All right, next on the agenda is, I think we are, committee report- All right, next on the agenda is, I think we are, committee reports. Policy and Governance. Commissioner Wick.
I don't have anything to report. Next week, Commissioner Fisher and I will be bringing for second reading the things we brought, first reading last time with tweaks that we've received in the interim.
Thank you. Next is Community Engagement. Commissioner Gulik's out sick, no report. Next is Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion. Commissioner Curry.
We continue to work with SCAP on defining metrics for, as data fields for the equity report card. It was changing. And learned about models or anything to revise that. And then we discussed a proposal that will be forthcoming from SCAP for trauma training. Those were the two things.
Thank you, Commissioner Curry. Personnel and Curriculum. Commissioner Carey and Orwell.
We haven't met.
You haven't met? Okay, great.
You have, you say, I didn't hear what you said.
No, I said we haven't met yet.
No, we have, we have a report.
Oh, it's not here.
Oh. I was going to talk about the last one we had, the special ed. We had the special ed. Because that's what's on the agenda. The minutes are, it's down further on the agenda, Kathy.
Yeah.
Say again. Oh, those are the minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
All right. Thank you, everyone, with the committee reports. Then next on the agenda is, moving on to the VSBA resolutions. Commissioner Wick.
Okay, Commissioner Fisher was going to, I think, lead this charge. But when it fell on the night that he wasn't able to be here, he asked if I would do so, and I said I would. I have dutifully read them, and I hope you have too. I'm not going to belabor the point, but as, I'm going to assume you've read them. So as you can see, there's a bunch of, as far as I can tell, 2018, 2019, last year's resolutions that have been updated. So that's the first part. Tweaked. I am not going to pretend that I understand every little rationale for all the tweaks. Many of the tweaks are really just naming changes and things like change state legislature, general assembly. But there are other changes. For example, they've stricken, so just to be specific, I'm looking at the document that is called 2018-2019 VSB Resolutions. I think they just intended to tweak that to 2019-2020. But I'm looking at Section 2 of that, Finance, subsection E. So I'm on page four of that document. And they struck a section called waiting of students who are English language learners. I'm supposing the reason they struck it, what that says is they were asking, a year ago, they were asking for the General Assembly to conduct an analysis. And I think the reason they're striking it is because, in fact, the legislature did pass a law that required an analysis. So my guess is that these are cleanup changes and that they're otherwise maintaining their positions on a number of things. So I guess what I'd like to suggest is that I don't have any problems with the major document. And anyone who does certainly raise it to the board. Moving on to the bylaws changes. Again, I tried to stay awake when I read these. But, just kidding, I read a lot of bylaws. But in any event, those seem pretty harmless to me. So I'm not going to have any major conversations this evening about it. There seemed to be one change, regional organization. There's a map. I will say that I'm ignorant enough that I don't know what the former regions were versus the new regions and why the changes. One thing I'm hoping is that, I think Claire is going to be our representative at this annual meeting. So I think really, I'll just give you a preview of my punchline here tonight. And that is that barring, that we, barring anything anyone says tonight, that we, essentially, our job is to delegate to Claire the right to vote for this board. And that Claire's job there will be to drink a lot of coffee and stay awake and listen. And if she, you know, she votes according to what she thinks is in the best interest of the school board. So that's, that's sort of generally what I think. But I did want to make one more comment. I looked through each and every resolution submitted by school districts. And the, the school boards association has attached a pass or do not pass at the bottom of each one. And I will say, for the most part, I'm not going to change their recommendation. I'm not going, my recommendation doesn't change. But if anyone else's does and you feel strongly about saying, the school board association said do not pass this one, but here's why I think Claire should vote, we should pass, vote for it, then please, now's the time to bring it up. But my own recommendation, and at the end, we'll have a little resolution to authorize Claire to be our proxy. But my own recommendation is that she, she listen, try to really, you know, hear the conversations going on there, the deliberation. But otherwise, the general default is we go with what the Vermont School Boards Association has suggested as to pass or not pass. That's all I have to say. Well, since I'm running this part of the show, Kathy Orwell, you, Commissioner Orwell, you raise your hand?
Yes, because I have one problem, and I've had it all along. Everyone vote, gets one vote. And it doesn't matter how many kids and how much you pay into the Vermont School Boards Association. I find that a very undemocratic way to do it. I, it's, I mean, it's like the old Vermont way they used to vote people into the Senate and the House was, one from every town, no matter how big or little they are. And that's not representative democracy. So I have a real problem with that. I had it last year. I still have it this year. And now that they've changed these things all around, I'm really leery because you have added a huge, if I'm reading this correctly, it's all of Chittenden County and Grand Isle? Or was that what it was? And now we're just Winuski Burlington and South Burlington.
Commissioner Wick.
Commissioner Orwell, let me clarify that. Although I am admitting I am not an expert at this, but I was just flipping through bylaws, the bylaws. And if you look at Article 6, it does say delegates and votes. Each regular member in good standing shall be entitled to one vote at the annual or special association meetings. Each regular member shall designate a delegate from its members to cast one vote on behalf. So.
Yeah, one vote.
Well, but, but each member, so the Burlington School District has one vote. Presumably the Winuski School District has one vote. Essex has one vote. I just want to make sure that that's what you're objecting to.
Yes, I'm objecting.
Would you rather have?
To the fact that, that it's.
You want two votes?
Well, no, I'm just saying it doesn't say anything about how many kids you're governing over, is what I'm saying.
All right, I just want to make sure we were talking.
Commissioner Orwell, if you could put, articulate.
In writing, I'm happy to share with the VSBA and Nicole Mace your thoughts, you know, from last year, this year. And that way, you know, I think that would be best served, you know, and hear what her reply is, given your concern. And I know, given the supervisory unions that have been created that now have a larger population as well, I wonder, you know, I'd ask that question. How many votes do they get per supervisory union? It's a good question. So if you follow up with me on email, thank you for that.
Yeah, all those schools that merge are now one vote.
Any other alerts, concerns, objections before we authorize Claire to attend the meeting and be our proxy? I'm, I'm not seeing any. So I will make a motion that we authorize Chair Wool to attend and vote on our behalf as the Burlington School Board. And there's a second and a third. Any further discussion?
No, just a question. I'm wondering if Chair Wool is also our VHI representative for that, for those meetings? Yes, yes. So I think you said, I think we have a package for you.
Yes, yeah.
We'll add that to the motion then. And if it's not already clear, that she be designated our rep for VHI.
Thank you, Superintendent.
We had a second, so any discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None. Okay. Any abstentions? None. Motion carries.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is we move into executive session. Motion to consider executive session under 1 VSA 313A, 1A, B, C, E, and F. Because premature general public knowledge would put the district at a substantial disadvantage to discuss the collective bargaining update and personnel matters.
I'll second that.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. We'll go to executive session. So this should be about 10 minutes in executive session.